I'd like to call to order the May 3, 2016, meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners. Invite you to stand if you choose, as Commissioner Hill introduces our person to lead the invocation, and then followed by the pledge.
I'm very pleased and honored to have with us tonight the senior pastor from Broadway United Methodist Church, Mr. Adam Schurz. Thank you, Adam, for being here.
Thank you. Let's pray together. God, we pause to give you thanks for a beautiful day, the chance to be alive, the opportunity to live in a place like this, and to be served by so many dedicated and loyal servants. We pray for those who will lead us and guide us, and for decisions that will be made, we pray for wisdom, discernment, for the best of the people of this community, and guided by your Spirit. We thank you for those who have served us well, who have risked their lives, and who are being acknowledged today, and we give you thanks for the many who they represent. And we ask that you would lead and guide all of us, grant us wisdom, and your blessing in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you for all that Broadway does in our community all over town. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Dunning.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here.
For awards and recognitions tonight, I have a couple of retirements to report. From the Police Department, Sue Ellen Lindsey retired after 20 years as an advanced communications dispatcher, and after 21 years firefighter EMT-2, James Rhodes has pulled the pin on retirement. So we wish both of them well, and thank them for their many years of service. Mr. DeFebbe.
I have no...
All right. Yes, sir.
I think our first responders in our community are always great when they're called upon, and we can always depend upon them. They do a great job, but in our community, we've always helped one another as best we can. And I want to send a special thank you and shout out to three gentlemen who helped save a life on April 20 on Campbell Lane. There was a car accident. These are just citizens that did what they needed to do to help. They were in the right place at the right time. And this is something that I'm thankful for, that we have in Bowling Green, and that's a willingness to help when help is needed. Two are employees of BGMU. That's Greg Brown and Jeff Bullock, and also a citizen who was there and described simply as a big guy, and that's Kenneth Willoughby. So we thank these people for what they did.
And we have a partner in our community to help to make this a great place to live, and from a beautification standpoint, Operation Bride is here tonight. Ms. Angie Alexia, do you have some awards to give out?
Thank you so much, and we really appreciate having the honor of presenting these awards at the beginning of city commission meetings, because it's really an opportunity for the city to recognize the recipients, and the general public can see it too. So thank you very much for allowing us to do this. As you know, we present awards when we have them, and we need nominations for those. So anybody who sees anything, any improvements made to a property, business, or a commercial or a neighborhood, please let us know. This month, for the month of April, we have a residential award winner and a commercial award winner, and I'll start with the residential. Heather, would you like to come up? Heather Patterson is...lives at 928 Josephine Street. And if you look up at that, you can see that the before is on the left, and the after's on the right. And I don't think I need to speak beyond that. That is amazing. That is just really beautiful. That is beautiful. And also, this picture on the left doesn't do justice, because that was chain-link fence, and it had all kinds of stuff on it. And now it's beautiful. I wish we had a closer picture, but it's really beautiful. Would you like to add something?
It was a long process, and I'm thankful to my parents, they helped, and a boyfriend who helped as well, so I didn't do this all on my own. So I want to give all the...
Very nice. That's very nice of you.
Well, on behalf of Operation Bride and City and County of Bowling Green, I would like to congratulate you and award you with the residential award for April. Congratulations, Heather. Thank you so much.
And this is very exciting, and probably they can tell you more about this, but Commonwealth
Health Corporation has made some additions to their holdings on Scottsville Road, and one of those was a residential property which was converted to commercial, and Tomorrow's Women, which is now part of CHC. Wonderful, that's a wonderful marriage. And the quality of having that change so subtle is really key, especially that neighborhood. So I would like to recognize Jamie with CHC and Mike with CHC. Bonnie and Lauren, you guys can come up, because I think I'm presenting it to kind It really, it's beautification, but also, one of the things that we feel really strongly about is you can make improvements to a property, and it can be subtle. It doesn't have to be really loud, but especially when you're taking a residential property and converting it to commercial, and doing it in a really subtle and unobtrusive way, I think is significant, especially for that area. So we congratulate you and present you all, all of you, with the Commercial Pride Award for April from Operation Bride. Thank you so much. Would you guys like to add anything?
Bonnie?
Thank you very much.
I want you to know that many years ago, I used to cut the front yard. So if you need to cut now, don't call me.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your efforts to make this a great place to live. All right. Mr. DeFebbe, you have some riverfront area information?
I have two items, Mayor. The first will be a need for an executive session. I'll get that out of the way with a vote if possible.
Pursuant to CARAS 618101C, for discussions of proposed or pending litigation against you on behalf of the city.
So move.
Second.
Hill second, by Perigin. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
The second item relates to some improvements that we're contemplating with the commission along the riverfront. As the commission knows, the citizens know, we completed our master recreation plan for the next 20 years. Part of that involves development of the riverfront area. We're here tonight to sunshine for the commission and for the public some of the proposed plans we have for that area. As city manager, it touches me that four people that work with me have taken this plan to this point. I'd like to acknowledge Brent Childers, Brent Belcher, Matt Powell, and Nick Cook, who have provided a lot of leadership, a lot of work to get us to this point. I think Brent's going to lead in the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight about this. This is something we've been working on for several weeks, and to have this type of conceptual plan in such a short amount of time, I also want to thank our partner in that, AMIC Foster Wheeler, we had hired to assist us in that. But I want to start the story from several years ago. A couple of years ago, the Fire Department made us aware about some issues. There is a kind of a boat ramp underneath the Old Collar Street pedestrian bridge. It's really just kind of a paved area. It's not really a boat ramp. You can launch a boat there, but it's not what we would call a boat ramp, about the need to improve that, mainly for public safety, water rescue, because if you know the rapids are just above there, and if you don't put in there, then you've got to go all the way down to Boat Landing Road, about eight and a half miles down the river. So that's where it started. So this group had started on working on a state LWCF grant application, max on that $75,000, and our chances were not great. We knew that going in. As we started on that, I became aware of an opportunity in just its second year of funding, and the National Park Service has an urbanized area LWCF program for only cities 50,000 and greater, and only two applications per state. So that limits the application pool to 100. Once we found out that opportunity, and the maximum was $750,000, that really opened up our eyes to what could be the possibilities here. So where we started at was a boat ramp for public safety and recreational purposes. We really tried to develop a transformative project for the entire riverfront area, and following in the Branston to Carroll Parks Master Plan, and also some of the riverfront foundation plans, and really trying to develop something here that we felt like could transform that section of town, that area of town, the whole downtown area. So what we're proposing tonight is to submit a grant application for $1.5 million, $750,000 coming from the feds, $750,000 coming from us. It's a 50/50 match requirement. We don't believe that we'll get the whole 750 if we're funded. This is only the second year of the program. Last year, the largest award was half a million dollars, and we're competing against much larger cities. Whereas on the state side, we are the big city, and, you know, we're competing against smaller cities, now we are the small city competing against bigger cities. We think that works to our advantage, because the ability for the city of Bowling Green to develop this park all on its own at one time is severely limited just because of the price tag. Each of you should have a colored conceptual drawing, and a black and white conceptual drawing. The black and white is actually easier to read, that's why we gave you both, but the color is much prettier and catches more attention, that's why we gave you that one. You should also have a budget. So what we're looking at is Phase 1, is what we're going to be putting in the grant application to be submitted. The additional phases are out years, or, you know, some other type of funding to secure those. So what you're seeing on the map is all that combined, but really what we're looking at as part of the grant application is Phase 1 part of that. And I'll let Brent Belcher, Director of Parks and Recreation, come up and talk about what those elements are.
Thank you, Big Brent. Appreciate the time. Board of Commissioners and Mr. DeFebbe, appreciate the time. We'll reiterate what Mr. DeFebbe mentioned. Great time to work with our fellow coworkers and outside of my own Parks Department, and it's nice to work with the NCS on the grant. Matt Powell from Public Works, which is our river guru, for lack of a better term, and landfill, and then a Fire Department element as well. So our proposal here does touch a lot of different departments within our own city government. And the parks side, obviously, you're offering Parks Grant money. We're excited about that opportunity to further the recreational opportunities for the citizens and improve the quality of lives that we reach. I'll point out that basically, when you look at our phases, it works from the river out, if you want to look at that way. We want to concentrate initially on the boat ramp. The next thing would be the fishing piers. Urban fishing is really the...a bad pun, but it's the hook of what we're looking for on this grant, the urban fishing opportunities that we provide with this. So that would include fishing habitat improvements, which Matt may be able to embellish a little bit more than I can, but those sort of things. And then connecting what we'll call the property beside the Collar Street Bridge to Weldon Pete would be another, I guess, the third step. So some sort of a sidewalk, bike trail, greenways connection under the bridge, under Oda Louisville Bridge, would be instrumental in connecting those two properties so that you would not necessarily have to go on Oda Louisville Road to get to and from. So that would be the third element right off the top that we'd want to get to. Everything else would be infrastructure, parking lots, possibly shelters, that sort of thing. It would be basically keeping the theme from our master plan that we had done for our Department of Outdoor Recreational Opportunities, nature areas, naturalized areas for this park. It would not be fields of play, per se. It would be open areas. We'll call it, I think they use the term here, about an edible orchard, possibly type of things that we would have in this area. So it would keep that theme. And then, as you progress longer into our phases, you know, we could look at other amenities such as possibly a dog park and other additional restrooms and/or parking lots associated with the more traffic we feel like we're going to be bringing to this area. So with that said, I don't know, if you guys have any questions for me directly from the Parks Department, I'd be happy to answer them. Matt want to speak about anything about the water itself? He's good?
That's a dangerous thing to ask.
It is. It really is.
Questions for Mr. Belcher? Okay, thank you. Mr. DeFebbe?
We just wanted to sunshine it here and apply for the money so that we can start developing this area. We feel this is one of the emergent areas that we need to use for the community, and we want to start now.
I've always been a...I was always disappointed we had a riverfront, but no development on it, so...
What's really interesting is, I don't know if the commission remembers, we just bought a house which we tore down at the end of the landfill, so you can see how that even fits into what we were doing here. But again, it was nice having staff working across departmental lines as a team to produce this product tonight.
Where is our $750,000 match going to come from?
It'll come from a fund balance that we have.
Side money from the Convention Center. Don't we use those funds to set aside to provide the fund balance specifically for Parks improvements?
$300,000 is the amount that we've had. We're going into our third year of that this coming year, but yes, $300,000 is what we're getting right now. It's annually.
Thank you so much.
I think having a dog park downtown is going to be a great addition. With all the new residents, I think it's going to be great. I've heard some interest from other citizens.
As more people moving downtown, they have less place to take...did you touch on the disc golf?
The disc golf?
Yeah, did I miss that?
I didn't touch on a lot of the recreation amenities just because...
That's a pretty big deal.
The disc golf, it is. You know, this past weekend, we just had 900 golfers from amateur golf championships was in Bowling Green. This would add to that, obviously, that inventory that we have in our city. But you're looking at disc golf, rock climbing, it's boulders. It would be man-made boulders there for individuals to climb on, and then the bike pump track, I believe we've spoken about that before, would be something that we'd be looking at in a different phase as well, but we would love to have the opportunity to build multiple phases there.
Talking about some kind of boulder climb, too.
It's the same, they're talking about on the right side of the map, they're talking about what they would call a smaller portion of that, yeah, similar ideas. It'd be a beginner, novice, even youth, I guess, by the best way of describing, smaller boulders.
How about your questions? All right, thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Anything else?
Okay. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
The approval of minutes for the regular meeting on April 5, 2016.
So move.
Motion by Hill, second by Perigin. Is any discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
It's time for public comments. The City Commission provides an opportunity for individuals that might want to bring something to the City Commission's attention that's not on tonight's agenda, and this would be that opportunity if anybody's wanting to speak. Yes, sir. If you would, please provide your name and address for the record.
My name is Barrett Greenwell, and I live at 1355 Kentucky Street.
Thank you.
Will those here today in support of fairness please stay in with me? We are here today, once again, to ask you to pass a fairness law for Bowling Green, Kentucky. While you choose not to act, Kentucky and Bowling Green will continue to experience brain drain, as many bright, young LGBTQ people such as myself leave this community and never come back. I grew up in Bardstown, Kentucky, and in the last four years, I have made Bowling Green my home. I am a student at Western Kentucky University, where I double major in political science and international affairs, with minors in economics and criminology. In four years of coursework, I have maintained a 4.0, and next week at graduation, I will be honored as the scholar of the college. Next fall, I will start law school at one of the highest-ranked institutions in the nation. I am also a gay man who feels that Kentucky is my home, and I would love to one day return to Bardstown or to Bowling Green to practice law, but I will not while I can arbitrarily be fired or evicted solely on the basis of my sexual orientation. Your continued refusal to protect my basic human rights makes it impossible for me to return. Last year, I had an internship in the office of Congressman Brett Guthrie, but even as I became closer with my coworkers, I was forced to dodge questions about significant others and future plans for fear that I would be asked not to return to work. And so I ask you, if you were me, would you be willing to live and work in an environment where you had to lie about who you are just to feel safe? Bowling Green will continue to experience this brain drain while you remain unwilling to protect the youth of this community, which I know you care so much about. What we are asking for is not unreasonable. We merely want you to acknowledge that discrimination exists, and to add four words to an already existing city ordinance. By doing those simple tasks, you can change the way people look at this city. But as long as you do not, you will continue to lose Kentucky's best and brightest to other cities that do protect our rights. Please add a fairness law so that students like me feel safe returning to live and work in this community that we hope to one day call home. Thank you.
What else? All right. Thank you. The first item for consideration is the second reading of BG...second reading of ordinance number BG 2016, number 12.
Ordinance Res zoning Real Estate. Ordinance zoning a tract of land containing 3.29 acres from AG Agriculture to GB General Business located on Russellville Road, presently owned by John P. Tartar, trustee for Amy Tartar and David Tartar, trustee for Molly Tartar.
So move.
Hill second, by Dunning. This is the second reading. We had the first reading about a month ago. Is there any other discussion or comments? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2016, 13.
Ordinance Amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 25 Code of Ethics of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to amend Subchapter 25-11 related to nepotism as recommended by the Board of Ethics.
So move.
Second.
Second by Williams. Second reading. Is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 2016, 14.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number 3 to the City Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2016.
So move.
Second.
Hill second. Again, a second reading. Are there any further discussion or questions for Mr. Mizell? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Order 201665.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Jason T. Souders to the position of Deputy Fire Chief in the Fire Department.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor. A short time ago, we appointed Jason Colson as our new Fire Chief of our department. Today's his first seminal promotion as Fire Chief, so I would ask Jason to come forward.
And I said, "Take it easy on me." Mayor and Commissioners, I'm honored to be here this evening presenting my recommendation of promotion for the Deputy Chief vacancy created by the retirement of Todd Napier, who happens to be with us this evening. Chief Napier retired at the end of April. Promotional testing for this position took place back in the fall of 2015. Four members met eligibility requirements and chose to complete testing for this position, which included a written exam and various assessment center exercises. Based on the results of the promotional testing and his performance throughout his career, I'm here to recommend Captain Jason Souders for promotion to Deputy Chief. Share a brief personal story with you. Nearly 18 years ago, my wife was visiting a doctor's office where Jason was working as an x-ray tech. Through various conversations, Jason expressed an interest in becoming a firefighter, so he asked my wife if she thought it'd be okay if he called me, and she gave him my number. But shortly after that, I received a phone call from Jason asking how to become a firefighter, if I enjoyed the job, and if you know Jason, lots of other questions. But during that course of conversations, I recall he had a tremendous passion for becoming a firefighter, and then fortunately for us as the city, he brought that passion to the department when he was hired as an inspector in the Prevention Division back in 1999. So Jason spent a few months in the Prevention Division, and then transferred into the suppression side of the business as a firefighter EMT. In 2006, he was promoted to Fire Apparatus Operator. During his tenure as an apparatus operator, he began managing the department CPR program and was also the department's Emergency Vehicle Awareness Program liaison, and he went throughout all the local high schools helping present that program. In 2010, Jason was promoted to the Company Commander of Training, and during his time in that division, he managed and conducted training for nearly 30-plus of our recruits. He developed and implemented company performance drills, and began officer development classes for the entire department. Outside the department, Jason helped conduct officer development training at Glasgow Fire Department. He's also published two articles in trade magazines, and has served on several Fire Department Assessment Centers throughout the state. In 2013, Jason transferred back to the Suppression Division, where he has been actively engaged in the department. Outside of his normal activities or duties at the airport station, he's worked to create and revise various standard operating guidelines. He's conducted research on line-of-duty deaths to present that to all personnel so that we can prevent that from occurring within our city, and has helped in preparing operational plans of various target hazards throughout his district. In his 17-year career, Jason has served on the Employee Committee multiple times, as well as the Safety Committee. He has become certified as a firefighter 1, firefighter 2, emergency medical technician, hazmat technician, state fire instructor, incident safety officer, and also as a fire officer. Joining Jason tonight are his wife, Alicia, his three children, Elizabeth, Rachel, and Michaela. Again, Mayor and Commissioners, it is my honor to recommend Captain Jason Souders for promotion to Deputy Chief of the Bowling Green Fire Department. Deputy Chief.
At this point... Well, since I know him real well, I'm not going to ask him to give the lengthy speech that I normally do, but his lovely wife, she came.
We're excited for you. Do you have any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Always a good inch ready to go up when it's time to move up in the Fire Department, so thank you all so much for all that you do. All right. Municipal Order 201666.
Municipal Order approving the promotion of Jason W. Hopkins to the position of Irrigation Spray Technician in the Parks and Recreation Department.
So move.
Second.
Hill second, by Williams. Mr. DeFebbe?
We also have another promotion tonight in our Park and Rec Department. As is our protocol, I would ask Brent Belcher to come forward and put his nominee before you. Brent?
Once again, appreciate your time to speak today. Coming before you to present Jason Hopkins' promotion within the Golf Division as promoted from a landscape gardener to an irrigation spray technician. Jason began as a part-time employee in 2009, and then he got promoted in 2011 into his current position, his full-time position. Jason is a dedicated employee that we're excited about having the additional supervisory role that will come along with as irrigation spray technician, along with the more responsibilities for...the expanded responsibilities for the golf course itself. And so I believe Jason's here today. I saw him in his UK shirt. He's here, and appreciate the opportunity to present Jason for the opportunity for promotion.
Congratulations, Jason. We're excited for you as well. Although, Joe, I did notice he wasn't a purple. If it makes any difference on the vote, I'm not sure. He's not a purple. I didn't know if that made any difference to you or not.
What is it?
He's a gator.
[laughing].
Any other comments or questions?
We'll give him the opportunity.
All righty. Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Dunning.
Yes.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Congratulations. Municipal order two thousand sixteen sixty-seven.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Jeffrey Steen to the, and reappointment of Tony Witty to the Bowling Green Audit Committee.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Denning. This is a recommendation for our audit committee. Debra, I don't think Debra's here tonight, helped me find some people for that committee. Tony is getting, again agreeing to continue his appointment on there. And Jeff Stein from Through the Loom, his attorney, also is one to participate. So I appreciate their willingness to serve. So any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen sixty-eight.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Heather Rogers to the University District Review Committee.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Perrigen. This is also a recommendation for the expiring term of Tom Hart, who wished to not continue after, I forget how many years he served on there. He, he served his time. Yeah. I appreciate all that he did for us, and we look forward to Heather's participation there. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen sixty-nine.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand sixteen forty-two for Public Works Operations Division parking lot paving from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of fifty-one thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-five cents.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. Any of us who are familiar with the lapses lean public works operation are fairly familiar with the right-hand side of the building, which we all enter, but most of the work occurs on the left side for staff with their trucks. And that has generally been an area that needs some attention. It's stone and mud. We felt it was time to pave the area to allow our workers to have easier access to the building and to make repairs and to keep our vehicles cleaner. So we went out to bid. We had two bidders. The low bid is Scotty's. We're here tonight to ask you to approve that.
I'll answer questions. Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen seventy.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number two thousand sixteen eleven for Fairview Cemetery Maintenance Building Construction Project from Carter Douglas Company LLC of Russellville, Kentucky in the amount of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perrigen. Mr. Febo.
One of the most inadequate, delinquent buildings that we as a city government own is our maintenance facility at the Fairview Cemetery. We're here tonight to do something about that. For the last number of months, we went out to study and bid to build a new maintenance facility on the other side of the road. The building that we will build is, we believe, will be consistent with the nature of the mission that we do, as well as consistent with the neighborhood. It's one of the reasons why the building is more expensive than anticipated is because we wanted to be thoughtful to those who are buried there and not have the industrial-looking building next to the graves, as well as to show respect for the neighborhood. So we had three bidders. Low bidder is Carter Douglas. Brent Belcher could outline more of the details of the building if you'd like.
I'll answer your questions. Roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG two thousand sixteen fifteen.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing sixteen point eleven plus or minus acres from RM two, two-family residential to RS one D, single-family residential located at Fairground Edition subdivision and Collet Edition subdivision with various owners.
Second.
By Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. As is your protocol and desire, Ben from the Planning Commission is here. If you have any questions or would like an explanation of this particular ordinance.
Any comments or questions? This is, again, is a group rezoning of lots that are trying to keep the character of their neighborhood as single-family residential, and it's only those lots that have agreed to that. And the planning commission on their own is taking care of that expense and doing it for the whole neighborhood. So we appreciate their efforts there. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG two thousand sixteen sixteen.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing one point two one acres from GB General Business and P. Public to HB Highway Business located at fourteen seventy-three Kentucky Street presently owned by Kentucky and Adams LLC.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Perrigen. Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. The same applies. If you have any question, Ben is here from the Planning Commission to answer any questions.
I'll answer your question. I believe this is the CVS rezoning. Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen seventy-one.
Municipal order approving payment of invoice from the Kentucky Auditor of Public Accountants in the amount of fifty thousand dollars related to the WKU gateway to downtown Bowling Green Tax Increment Financing Block Six RAP Project Examination.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams.
The mayor and I can tag team if necessary on this, but as the commissions and the public is well aware, the Kentucky Auditor of Accounts did an audit of the Block Six RAP and made some recommendations pursuant to their protocol. Those who are being audited have to pay for, pay for that. The cost is a hundred thousand dollars. We're required as a participating partner with the county to split half of that cost. So our cost is fifty grand and the counties will be fifty. Mayor, you can add anything if you'd like.
The group price when we requested the, I think they actually expensed a hundred and seventy-three thousand on their books, but they're honoring their commitment for a hundred thousand. Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen seventy-two.
Municipal order approving crossing closure agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Denning. Mr. Febo.
Thank you. Mark Absher is here as our transportation engineer and a, I'm not sure yet depending what you want to know about this, but might be helpful for him to get, take us around the block about what municipal order two one six seventy-two is. With your courtesy, could Mark, could Mark give an overview, please?
Absher, glad to. We had talked about this previously with the agreement with CSX as far as they're going to close the right-of-way across Robinson, and so we're going to pull back the roadways away from that area. Part of the agreement was to give us the fifty thousand. They're going to do that as well. And they've also agreed as a part of that to not extend the construction to the double spurs across Old Morgantown Road. So we got everything we wanted, kind of the nuts and bolts of that.
Can you explain to the public why this is, become necessary to, why this is the better deal for the city and why CSX has the ability to do some improvements to its own line and how this is part of that strategy? That might be helpful.
Yeah. Actually, they have the right to close their access across any of our roadways, and that's what they've kind of wanted to do, partially blocking Old Morgantown Road. And so they're going to run another spur across there and have a waiting train cross Old Morgantown Road and block that for some significant period of time. We met on site. We talked about this. I asked them, "Please don't do this. It could be really bad." And immediately at the site, they agreed. They saw that, you know, there's a pedestrian flow. And so we were able to work out, you know, let's talk about doing Robinson, talk about doing staggered train back further away from Old Morgantown Road so you could still have access to it. So it was kind of turning a real bad situation into the best benefit for the, for the city at the time.
We're getting fifty thousand dollars. We feel will be sufficient to help us to improve, I mean, the crossing at Robinson to close it. It's their right-of-way, so we're not doing a right-of-way closure. We're just doing a road closure at the end of their right-of-way. We believe fifty thousand would be sufficient to not only handle that cost, but possibly other rail crossing costs we have throughout the city. So we think it's a good deal. We vetted it with your knowledge over the last three months, and I think tonight we're here to ask your approval.
Mark, do you know yet exactly when this is going to take place?
Our part has to be done by August thirty-first. The CSX is going to peel up their part out of the road, out of their right-of-way. They're going to peel up all the asphalt and everything. It'll just be railed through there, and there's a little ditch on the other side. So again, this all has to be done and in place by the thirty-first of August as part of our agreement, which shouldn't be a problem at all. We've already, I've already got plans kind of laid out and talked with Bobby and those guys about when they can do that. As far as the rest of the agreement, once it's signed, we send that off to them. We complete our part of that, which is kind of making Robinson look nice as far as our approaches. And then once they see that, then they'll send us a check to, for fifty thousand dollars.
Do we know if they're going to, if there's going to be signage at the location or anything to?
Yeah, there will have to be some signage at the end of this. We typically put in the road signs and we'll put a warning saying, you know, there's no outlet down at the end of this. But we will have a turnaround, kind of what we call a hammerhead on the creasing approach. As far as the Waffle House approach and the, and the car dealership on the other side, they've got kind of a, already a driveway there to kind of come back out onto Russellville Road. We, we'll have the signs there, and we want to try to add a little greenery there, too, to kind of give you the appearance that you're really, you know, not supposed to be going through here. And they talked about putting a fence across there, but we might talk about something else instead of, we want it to look really nice through there when we close it out.
We want it to be safe, where people that are used to coming through.
That's the other biggest part of this, is trying to make sure it's safe, too. So we may end up going with a chain like, say, fence or something to that effect to keep people from crossing in that area. And another part of this is each crossing that we reduce reduces that statistical probability that somebody's going to go across this track at that point and something happen.
Well, this crossing is the site of several fatalities in the past, and I know Joe and I talked about some of the ones in, in our distant memories, but it, it's kind of a dangerous crossing with not, not a lot of sight, lot of sight.
And this will help remove that from this, from a possibility there.
I want to thank Mark and Commissioner Rick for his help with, or Williams with this, because it's, it took some nuance to understand what we're getting and what the alternatives were. So I think, I think we all agree this is the best alternative for the city, and Mark was helpful in putting together those negotiations.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen seventy-three.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the police department in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Perrigen. Mr. Febo.
Our friends at the Department of Justice have a, a program that helps local police departments buy some necessary tools to help with their survival in higher-risk situations. One of those is the purchase of bulletproof vests. They subsidize fifty percent of that through a grant program. Nick Cook did the necessary paperwork. We're here to ask you to allow us to accept fifteen thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars from, or apply for that to purchase thirty-seven vests for our police department. We replace those on a rotating basis. Nick's here if you have any questions.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen seventy-four.
Municipal order authorizing submission of a land and water conservation fund, outdoor recreation legacy partnership program grant application to the National Park Service in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Bowling Green River Front area improvements.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Febo.
During the city manager comments, you heard a presentation of a plan for the continuing development of the riverfront. This substantiates that request and allows us to apply for funds. It's important to realize this is a phased program, and so hopefully we'll be back here a number of times asking for more money over a number of years. The team is here if you have any questions.
I'll answer your questions. Both of them are here. Okay. Appreciate that. Please call the roll.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen seventy-five.
Municipal order author, approving the year thirteen annual action plan and amendments to the consolidated plan in years eleven and twelve annual action plans of the consolidated plan for the community development block grant entitlement funding and authorizing its submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So move.
Second.
By Hill, second by Perrigen. Mr. Febo.
It might be helpful if Brent Childers would come forward to give you a brief overview of this municipal order and explain the nuance involved here.
If you've heard Mr. DeFebo say it once, you've heard him say it several times, HUD loves plans, and that's what this is. And what it really is, is making the language consistent. So several years ago, I wrote the consolidated plan. In that, I called for a local strategy area, the BG reinvestment area, since it's tracks one oh one, two, three, four, five, six, twelve. Well, since that time, we learned of a new policy, not a new policy, but we weren't aware of it, called NRS A, Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area. And we chose to adopt that. So Nick wrote the plan, which you have a copy of, the NRS A, for greater flexibility in the use of our CDBG funding for our neighborhood improvements program. We were limited under CDBG rule, but CDBG rule says, okay, if you write an NRS A plan, then you can do this. Well, we want to do this in our neighborhood improvements. We felt like we needed the flexibility to target the areas in the BG reinvestment area
BG reinvestment area, uh, and how we needed to, to develop our programs to meet the needs of those areas. We wanted that flexibility. So what we're doing is we're approving the year thirteen, which starts July one, and we're amending twelve and eleven in the consolidated plan because we developed the NRS A. So we need to make all three of those line up, and the year thirteen is our normal, every first meeting in May, since I've been here in, in two thousand and ten, we've come before you for the approval of our annual action plan. That's what the year thirteen is. And the way that process worked is we went out for applications for twenty percent of our funding. The committee makes a recommendation. We write the plan based on that recommendation. We have a public hearing, uh, that was held whenever the commission meeting was canceled, uh, in April. That's where we held the public hearing. And now we've come before you. We have to turn that plan in by the middle of May, May fifteenth. We have forty-five days before the start of the fiscal year. And that's the, that was based on the recommendation of the CDBG Citizen Committee. I think that's the name of it. Um, so what we'll do from there is, starting in July, we'll bring forward the agreements, uh, for any of the partner agencies that were awarded funding, and we'll also start on our neighborhood improvements. Now, the year thirteen neighborhood improvements won't go into the area that I've already talked about, one oh five point two. That's years eleven and twelve funding. Year thirteen will go into a different neighborhood, and we haven't selected what that neighborhood is yet. Uh, but that's, it's going to take us a couple of years of funding to get enough money to go out there and really affect change. Uh, so, you know, this, this first couple of years, it took us a lot longer, uh, on the NRS A than we thought. The move to the new building delayed us. So we've had some setbacks, but we're really getting going now. Uh, we've got a bid opening in the morning, uh, for a new sidewalk project. We've got some projects under environmental review and be releasing some other bids, and should roll out the, the actual private property improvements program. Uh, that's a lot of Ps, I know, uh, this summer to get going. That's where we really wanted that flexibility, was in that private property improvements program. Uh, so that's kind of trying to clarify what all these plans are, what they all mean, how they all tie together, and why you're amending a couple and approving one. It all, it all does have to make sense and it all has to tie back together. Uh, and under our citizen participation plan, which is another plan that we have to follow, anytime we make changes to our annual action plan or our consolidated plan, we have to have a public hearing, thirty-day committee period, and then bring it back before you all. So that's why it was important to have everything work out in succession. So now we can submit everything to HUD. And I'll entertain any questions or, or comments that anyone has.
Questions for Mr. Childers?
[coughing]
This doesn't lock us into the, um, decision of the recommendation of the committee, because I know the county's considering some things Friday morning and want to make sure that we don't overwrite them or undercut them and maybe coordinate with them a little bit or?
This is our plan at this point. Uh, like I said, our citizen participation plan guides how we amend those. Uh, this is, you know, built on the recommendation, but that's all it is. It's a recommendation. I've served on a lot of committees that make a recommendation, and that's what it is, a recommendation. Uh, so once we actually move in July is when we'll actually move forward to implementing some of those recommendations. But, so, you know, this doesn't lock us into that. Uh, we've amended plans several times. That's why we have a process for it, and, you know, we'll probably have to do some more in the future. Uh, most of the time where you see where we're amending plans is where we've captured underspending. You know, we might have ten thousand here, fifteen thousand here. And I think our College View sidewalk project, we cobbled together about five years of plans. Well, I had to amend all five years' plans to say that we're going to do this project. So those types of things, you know, we're accustomed to that. We understand it. Uh, plans change, you know? Uh, you start off with, on one path, and then you realize, hey, there's better opportunities. And, and you move and, and follow that path. So we're, we're okay with that too. Any other questions or comments?
Anyone else? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen seventy-six.
Municipal order authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for Transportation Alternatives Program funds on behalf of the Greenways Commission of Bowling Green in Warren County in the amount of one hundred seventy-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febow.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, one of our strategies as an organization is to, uh, over time with the right incentives from the state, is to extend the greenways throughout our community and provide the walking connectivity we need for this large linear park. We're here tonight to, uh, accept, uh, roughly a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars from the state to expand the greenways another quarter mile from, uh, Moss Middle School, uh, to the existing greenways at Creekwood Drive. Uh, we think it's, it not only achieves that public goal, but it also adds an element of safety for the kids who walk, uh, to Moss Middle. Um, Miranda Clements, uh, is here if you have any questions.
I'll answer questions. Match that comes from the budget amendment we just received, right? Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order two thousand sixteen seventy-seven.
Municipal order authorizing the filing of a grant application with the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration for assistance under the section fifty-three thirty-nine B program in the amount not to exceed three million three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
So move.
Second.
Hill, second by Perigin, Mr. Febow.
Uh, not everyone in our community has access or uses a, a private vehicle, uh, to, for their life. A number of people in our community, uh, depend on public transportation. For a number of years, we have been supporting this, uh, through our contract and community action to provide, uh, public transportation to those that need it, with always the hope of expanding it for those who aren't, who don't need it and take it as an option. We're here tonight to, uh, file a grant, roughly three point three million dollars to allow community action to acquire the buses they need to keep the fleet, uh, running as well as, uh, concomitant and facility improvements that would be used for the buses and, and for the staff. It requires a twenty percent match, which is available through us, which is known as a toll credit, or it can come through state money requiring us not to use at this point any general fund money. Uh, representatives from community action are here if you have any questions.[1771.75]